Okay, good evening. We're gonna call the meeting to order. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance, just to let everyone know this is live streaming and we are taping the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have a couple of announcements. There's gonna be a free community event on May 3rd from 2 o'clock in the afternoon to 5 o'clock in the afternoon at the Jason Community Wellness Plaza located at 1180 Welsh Road, North Wales, PA. The Asian American and Pacific Islander, we're celebrating Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. While this event does honor the Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, it is open to and welcome of all, welcoming of all families, offering a joyful opportunity to connect residents with valuable local services, cultural events, experiences, and fun activity for all ages. So some of the events that they've included and highlighted here, a resource fair featuring vendors from the region's health and human service sector, health screening including checks for blood pressure, diabetes, and cholesterol, cultural performances from local Asian American and Pacific Islander groups, food and family-friendly games, children activities including a moon bounce, face painting, cotton candy, and balloon animals. Sounds like a wonderful event. We also have Heroes Next Door. The YouTube channel Heroes Next Door recently highlighted our police and fire departments. The program takes an inside look at our first responders and how they operate on a daily basis. So visit their YouTube channel or click on the link from Friday's e-news newsletter that was sent out. Item number four is public comment. So any persons wishing to make public comment during this meeting on any items that are not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Come up to the mic. Any public comment? Item number five is our consent agenda. This is gonna make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented for the following minutes of the April 14th, 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting and payment of bills for April 28, 2025. Any public comment? All those in favor? Item number six, this is our VMSC Emergency Medical Services Operation Update. Carolyn McCreary.
Thank you. Good evening. Shane Wheeler, who is the Chief Executive Officer of VMSC EMS, is here tonight to provide the board with an update on their operations. Chief, before you start, do you want to introduce your counterparts since not everybody knows them?
Bryson will stand. Bryson is the Chief of Staff. He keeps me on track most days. Well, good evening. I appreciate your time and opportunity to address to address the council. So last year, we ran in Montgomery Township, we ran 1,931 total municipal responses. Our average response time from the time we received the call to the time we're on scene is 6 minutes and 39 seconds. A total average time on calls about 55 minutes and our status was 100%. The number one and number two calls in Montgomery Township were sick persons, the broad category, and then falls. Falls account for generally either the number one or the number two type of response we respond to everywhere. It's a real epidemic, particularly amongst our elderly population. Something we're desperately trying to find solutions for through some community initiatives to try to prevent and educate our elderly populations. Interesting enough, there's some breakdowns of the types of calls that we ran cardiac incidents. Were 172, 27 from farmer's strokes, and 522 trauma incidents. In Montgomery Township, we were dispatched to 39 cardiac arrests. Out of those 16 were in a state of arrest as early that we were, we could do CPR and work to save. Of the 16, seven of those patients were successfully resuscitated. And that's a, you know, a pretty big accomplishment. It's a partnership between fire department and our law enforcement partners who would oftentimes, particularly on the law enforcement side, beat us on scene and they've already defibrillated the patient. So hats off to our partners for helping us make a real difference in our communities. We're super proud of the fact that our cardiac arrest survival rates are really outpace both the nation and the Commonwealth. And people are just, have a better opportunity to survive at cardiac arrests in our communities. And I attribute that to the partnerships we have with our first responding agencies, the public outreach that we're doing with community CPR, and the efficiency in the delivery of specialized care for these resuscitations. Oftentimes, it's getting them back, but keeping them alive is the real challenge. And we've deployed some advanced technologies such as pre-hospital ventilators that can give precise ventilation amounts and oxygenation that's necessary. Particularly new formularies that allow us to better manage patients who are hypotensive in those situations and allow us to use our infusion pumps that we now have on our trucks to kind of help formulate that. So a lot of advanced enhancement, which would not be possible without the support from our municipal partners. And we're particularly appreciative of Montgomery Township's continued investment and leading all the other municipalities with regards to their commitment to funding their emergency medical service. So thank you so much for that, and I think it's really paying off. We've also completed our first paramedic program in-house and with 10 students starting the program and 10 students completing the program, those are all right here in our community. So more paramedics, we have 13 in this next, in this current class, and so far they're all doing remarkable. So we continue to add paramedics to our ranks, which we're super blessed to to have such great capable people that we've been able to bring on board. But, you know, lots happening with education, continued clinical enhancements, and reinvestments into our organization. So happy to answer any questions if you all have any. So it takes us about a year to deliver. It's about 1,800 hours between the classroom portion and the hands-on and clinical rotations we have to do at the hospitals in the field. So we're trying to put one of those programs on once a year.
Can you touch on the ability to have blood on the trucks now?
Oh, yeah, that's a big deal. We're among the 1% of the EMS agencies in the United States that have the capacity to do blood transfusions in the field. And incredibly remarkable with regards to the impact on patients who need blood, right? You know, patients, if they don't have access to blood early on, their mortality rate from serious trauma is very high. You know, we can really reduce that and turn around. It's estimated in the studies that we can reverse about 75% of trauma-related deaths due to blood loss by being able to administer blood in the field. So it's a, it's a really big deal. It's very complex. It took us about a year of meetings and investments and training to do that. The cost is significant and would certainly be out of our reach if we did not have the support. Just to launch the program itself is about $50,000. And unfortunately, the mechanism for reimbursement to deliver that is, does not, does not even get close to touching the cost. But the benefit to humanity and what we'd be able to do by reducing mortality is huge. So it's, it's worth the investment. Super proud that we have that capability here. I think there are four systems in Pennsylvania. We're one of those four. The only one in Bucks, Montgomery, and Philadelphia, Delaware Counties that can administer blood in the field. So really proud of that capability. Thank you for making it happen. It was your contributions that helped us get there. But yes, you're welcome.
Is that every truck that has the blood onboard? How many trucks?
We only have one blood unit, right? It's on our medic responder. The supervisor has that blood. It's in a specialized mobile refrigerator that we keep on that. The refrigerator alone was $17,000. So it, it just stays, it kind of stays local and then responds to calls that we think there might be a need for blood. Thank you.
I forwarded your emails that you put out last night to the board. I'm not sure because they're all in various places during the day that they've had a chance to read it. So could you just give the latest update that VMSC is experiencing with the city of Chester?
Yeah, we're in a crisis, right? It's a, I use the term humanitarian crisis because I believe that's what it is, right? They have hospitals that closed, their EMS system is scheduled to close on Friday. They currently service 26 municipalities in Delaware County, Chester being a big one. The problem Chester is it's a very economically disadvantaged community. It has the highest infant mortality rate in the Commonwealth. Very high incidence of cancer. Just a, it's, it's a really, makes you really appreciate what we have here. So we've been down there, in fact, I just literally left from Chester to come up here after meeting with the community leaders down there. We're working very closely with the the commission down there and the various municipalities to try to create a to prevent a lapse in coverage. Without the local trauma center and hospital, the closest trauma center down there is 30 to 40 minutes away, right? So I have no doubt that this will cost lives, right? So we're approaching this as trying to help those communities out. We feel that this is our legacy, right? Dr. Boston, who founded our organization, brought, brought a hospital and an ambulance corps to an area that did not have it, right? And we feel like we're trying to honor that by replicating that same commitment to service for this community. So we've been, like I said, working very hard with them. It has been, I can't tell you how many hours we've gotten in this project so far, but it's paying off. And, you know, it won't have any, you know, impact on our operations here. We're using reserve fleet. We've been non-stop hiring. I think they did, they've probably interviewed 100 people in two days. Got two teams of hiring and they're like boom, 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 trying to, you know, the people who've lost their jobs. And so it is, it's just a, it's a lot of work. I think it's, I think it's godly work that we're trying to do. And we're just happy that we're, that we're capable to help. So that's what, that's what's happening in Chester.
I personally want to say thank you because unfortunately I have family and friends that are impacted by the closures that are happening. I think the next closest is Mercy Fitzgerald, which to your point, like 30 minutes away.
Right.
So thank you. Thank you. I read the letter and like filled up when I read it. So thank you.
Yeah, it is, it's a little emotional, right? I mean, literally, we've had people come to us and like just so thankful, right? So I feel it's the right thing to do, and I think that's the spirit of our community, right? We are giving community. I've only been here for a little over three years now, but that's one of the things that keeps me here, right? Is I just, the willingness to help the vulnerable, right? So happy to share in that philanthropic spirit, that willingness to help, right? So, but yeah, I think we're, I think we are going to be able to help them. It's, it's a lot of work. And we're, we're really juggling a lot of things. And there's a lot of foundational support down there in the commission that really stepped up to find funding to, you know, to offset these, you know, immense costs of trying to stand up a new EMS system. So I think it, I think it will be a really great opportunity for us to impact a lot of people and, you know, and continue to save lives, you know, throughout the region.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of everyone here in our community and that those, these communities that you're serving because these, as you mentioned, will impact lives. And so I think everything that we can do is, is something that's appropriate and whatever we can do to support you in this endeavor, please let us know.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Again, and I, and I don't say that lightly, your commitment and going to support our organization is, is we really appreciate it and it does make a difference. It would not allow us to do many of the things that we're able to do to help people, not just in Montgomery Township, but throughout, you know, the Delaware Valley. There are many municipalities that, you know, don't have a lot of funding, don't have a lot of additional money to be able to do a lot. And your leadership has, you know, encouraged a lot of municipalities to step up and do what they can. But so far, all the municipalities that we currently serve do contribute to what they can, right? And, and we appreciate that. And we've been, you know, one of the things that I really, myself and the board of directors have done is try to diversify our lines of services so that we can lessen that taxpayer burden to do that. So our operations with Children's Hospital Philadelphia and Jefferson Health and the Department of Defense provide a lot of relief to our organization and ultimately our communities from having to bear high taxes and et cetera. So.
You personally have done a lot of work, Chief, and I just want to say thank you for everything that you've done with this organization and moving things forward. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. I have a wonderful team and I have wonderful community partners. So thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, moving on, item number seven, this is the Consider Proclamation of Arbor Day for Tree City USA. Mary Ann McConnell.
Thank you. The Shade Tree Commission sponsors an annual event to celebrate Arbor Day. This year, the Roy Rodriguez Annual Arbor Day Tree Giveaway was held Saturday, April 26th, at the Montgomery Township Building and Gazebo Park. 280 native trees were handed out to township residents to plant. Montgomery Township, in addition, was also named as the 2024 Tree City USA and Growth Award recipient. This has been the 28th year that the township has been a Tree City USA recipient and the 25th year that the township has been awarded the Growth Award.
Does anybody go to Arbor Day?
So it was, it was a great event, even though it started off a little bit rainy. People were in line very early. Someone said they were in line at 7:30, but they did get their red bud. Every tree, we encourage people to take it home, plant it with love, let it give you some joy. I do believe there's a few trees left out there. So if anybody didn't get here to get a tree, feel free to stop over. But really great event. If no one, if there's anyone watching that's never been there, five or six choices, they're all things that can survive well in our climate. We have tree experts there to help you choose if you have wetlands, if you have full sun. And then we also have takeaway instructions to help you keep your plant alive. But really nice event and staff, as always, did a great job. Public Works, those guys are there and learning all about trees and really, really nice event. So.
Well done. Well done. I likened it to the draft, the NFL draft, the tree draft. Actually, the first one to go was a sugar maple, which I was surprised. So that was number one in the tree draft this year. Red buds, then red bud, one after the other.
I'm guessing you only get a certain number of each.
Yeah, I mean, we go a little heavy on the red bud and the sweet bay magnolia because they're the popular choices. But we try to add a little diversity in there too. So we had the white oak, we had the sugar maple, red maple, river birch, black gum.
And there was one that we didn't have because there was a late frost. What was that?
There was a sweet pepper bush, which a couple of people did come because it was originally on the list, but it was pulled two days earlier by the vendor. He said it didn't make the frost. So he didn't want to deliver them.
Yeah.
Yeah. He's been a very good vendor. We've been working with him for years.
Great event.
It is.
Okay. Well, then now therefore, the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery Township, Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim Saturday, April 26th, 2025, as Arbor Day in Montgomery Township. We urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, excuse me, we urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations. And this will be dated the 28th day of April, 2025.
Second.
Any public comment? All those in favor?
Glad in the heart. That's my favorite part.
Okay, item number eight, Consider Award a Contract for the Traffic Signal Modernization at North Wales Road and Harbaugh Lane. Greg Reese.
All right. Thank you very much. The township received an open bid utilizing Penn Bids on April 2nd, 2025, here at the Township Building. Gilmore and Associates, the Township Engineer, reviewed the two bids ranging from $629,470.55 to $646,122.75 and is recommending to award the bid to Armor &amp; Stones Electric, Incorporated, the lowest responsible bidder with a bid of $629,470.55. The recommendation letter and the bid tabulation sheets are included in your packet. The board authorized the advertisement of the bid at its public meeting on February 24th, 2025. A total of $710,000 has been included in the 2025 Capital Investment Plan for the traffic signal modernization at the intersection of North Wales Road and Harbaugh Lane. So our recommendation would be to award the bid as recommended to Armor &amp; Stones Electric, Incorporated.
We've used them before, correct?
Yes.
Any questions?
I guess I was surprised we only got two bids, was that?
That's, they're the only two that bid on it on Penn Bids. So it was advertised on Penn Bids.
And we came in under budget anyway, so.
Yeah, and they're actually pretty close.
This is like one of the closest I've seen. I always pay attention to the, and they always seem so far off.
They didn't leave much on the table, so, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to award the contract for the traffic signal modernization at the intersection of North Wales Road and Harbaugh Lane to Armor &amp; Stones Electric, Inc., the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $629,470.55 per the recommendation of Gilmore and Associates Township Engineer.
Second.
Any public comment? All those in favor? Okay, item number nine, the request for authorization to public, I'm sorry, to purchase removable wood chipper box. Greg Reese.
Okay, in 2025, the Public Works Department is scheduled to purchase a custom removable wood chipper box to fit any of our township-owned small dump trucks as approved in the 2025 Capital Investment Plan. Attached to the three quotes from three responsible vendors ranging from $8,240 to $13,300. Provided is the lowest quote for the equipment requested at a total cost of $8,240. The equipment meets the specifications prepared by the department. A total of $15,000 was included in the 2025 Capital Investment Plan to purchase a removable wood chipper box. So it would be our recommendation, the Board of Supervisors approves the purchase per the 2025 Capital Investment Plan.
So the specs were within the department. Will the lowest responsible bidder come back out and verify that before building or fabricating?
We're pretty much ready to go once we get authorization to move forward. So their price, they said, was guaranteed for that build. So.
I guess I just saw that the, only the one bidder actually had our dimensions on it. And I think that kind of surprised me a little bit that only one would include it, but they were the
Yeah.
responsible bidder.
So the truck went to each individual site and they, they took their measurements from that. So they, they knew what they were bidding on. So.
Where's Craftwell located?
Craftwell is right over off of 309.
Nice.
It's in the township. Yep.
Even better.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of one removable wood chipper box from Craftwell Fabrication Company, Incorporated, at a total cost of $8,240 per their quote dated April 8th, 2025. Second. Any public comment? All those in favor? Item number 10, Consider Authorization to Purchase and Upfit the Peterbilt Dump Truck. Greg Reese.
Okay, included in the 2025 Capital Investment Plan is the purchase of one Peterbilt Dump Truck to replace Truck 19. The Peterbilt Dump Truck will replace the following vehicle. It's a 2010 Peterbilt Dump Truck with 31,726 miles. Attached are the official price quotes from GL Sears, an authorized vendor under the Co-Stars Cooperative Purchasing Program to provide the requested vehicle for a total cost of $158,601. Also attached are the official price quotes from J&amp;J Truck Bodies and Trailers, an authorized vendor under the Co-Stars Cooperative Purchasing Program to provide and install the requested dump body and salt spriter for a total cost of $97,360. And Dejana Trucks and Utility Equipment, an authorized vendor under the Co-Stars Cooperative Purchasing Program to provide and install the requested snowplow for a total cost of $31,814. The total cost replaces Peterbilt Dump Truck, including equipment and installation, is $287,775. The equipment meets the specifications prepared by the Public Works Department. So our recommended budget, a total of $280,000, was included in the 2025 Capital Investment Plan for the purchase of the truck. However, the funds utilized for this purchase, although $7,775 over the figured budget, will not impact the township's budget as the purchase will be made with state liquid fuels funds. So our recommendation would be the Board of Supervisors approve the word, the bid for the contracts of the referenced purchases per the 2025 approved final budget.
So it seems like very low miles, but I'm sure that's not the case with a dump truck.
Well, it is low.
Years old.
It is low miles. But the one thing that we always have to take into consideration is the use that the truck gets. And snow removal and salting is always very hard on the trucks. So it's also a matter of the idle time. Idle time, a lot of times they're sitting. I'm gonna say when we're fueling up, when we're in between getting loaded, especially with salt, in the winter time, a lot of times you keep the trucks running or plugged in. So I'm gonna say the idle time has a lot to do with it as well.
What will we do with the old truck? Are we going to keep it as a spare? Are we gonna sell it?
The old truck will be sold on MNC bid, but we are gonna keep it until it gets replaced. So we have to make sure we have the trucks in the fleet so we're good to go for next winter.
How many of these trucks do we have?
Of the six-wheel dump trucks? I have, well, we have quite a few, yeah. We, I would say in the whole fleet, we're probably close that we have 20 trucks. I'm gonna say with our small trucks. I think we're right around seven of the big trucks. Of the, yeah, the bigger trucks, we're right around like eight trucks for the large. Of the, yeah, the bigger trucks, we're, we're right around like eight, eight trucks for the large, uh, dump trucks.
Which is also how we can handle all the roads in the winter time.
Correct. And I know, and I know that's a question we get quite a bit, too. Why do we need so many big trucks? It is a, it is something that we need for snow removal.
We have a lot of roads.
A big job.
When we need it, we need it.
It's, yeah, it is true.
And we rarely get a complaint about someone who hasn't been plowed, so on our roads, kudos.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to make a motion. Do I have to do these motions separately, or can I read them all?
You should do.
One at each, okay. Um, so we have three motions. We'll do the first one, motion, uh, to award the contract for the purchase of one Peterbilt Dump Truck to J, GL Sears Incorporated as authorized vendor under the Co-Stars Cooperative Purchase Program at a total cost of hundred and fifty eight thousand, six hundred and one dollars per their quote dated January tenth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Any public comment? All those in favor?
Hi.
Our second motion to award the contract for the purchase and installation of one dump body and salt spreader to J and J Truck Bodies and Trailers and authorized vendor on the, under the Co-Stars Cooperative Purchase Program at a total cost of ninety seven thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars per their quote dated March tenth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Any public comment? All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, and our last motion to award the contract for the purchase and installation of one snowplow to Dejana Truck and Utility Equipment and authorized vendor under the Co-Stars Cooperative Purchase Program at a total cost of thirty one thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars per their quote dated March fifth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Any public comment? All those in favor?
Hi.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Okay, item number eleven, authorized advertisement of the Police Pension Plan Ordinance Amendment. Carolyn McCreary.
Thank you. Before I go into item number eleven, I wanted to, um, let the board know that with the purchases tonight that you've approved for Public Works outside of the liquid fuels funds, um, we're still about twenty four to twenty five percent under budget in all of our capital so far this year, which, as you know, is a far cry from what we've experienced post-pandemic. So things are starting to come back in our favor again as far as bidding and on state contract. Uh, item number eleven is to authorize advertisement of the Police Pension Plan Ordinance Amendment. While reviewing the police collective bargaining agreement with the plan's actuary, we discovered that a change had not been incorporated into the plan document. So in order to do so, the board must make the change with an ordinance amendment, and this will ensure that the plan document mirrors the collective bargaining agreement. The change eliminates the service increments for officers hired after January one, twenty twenty one, and adds an early retirement benefit for those officers with twenty or more years of service who terminate their employment prior to the normal retirement date. Normal retirement under Act six hundred is age fifty with twenty five years of service. So tonight's staff is recommending that the Board of Supervisors authorize the advertisement of the proposed ordinance amendment.
Any questions? Okay, I'll make a motion to authorize the advertisement of proposed ordinance amendment to eliminate the service increment for the new hires after one, one twenty one and add an early retirement benefit.
Second.
Any public comment? All those in favor?
Hi.
Item number twelve is authorization to allocate ARPA, A R P A, funds to Capital Reserve Fund. Carolyn McCreary.
Thank you. In twenty twenty one and again in twenty twenty two, the township received a total of two million, seven hundred and forty two thousand, eight hundred and ninety four dollars and fifty seven cents in American Rescue Plan Act monies. In twenty twenty two, the U.S. Treasury released a final rule regulating how municipalities who receive ten million dollars or less in ARPA funding can utilize the replacement of lost public sector revenue. The final rule allows recipients to select between a standard amount of revenue loss or to complete a full revenue loss calculation. Recipients that select the standard allowance may use that amount for government services. In twenty one and twenty two report filings, the township preserved its right to choose this provision and specifically cited stormwater projects. In light of the above, the township does not have to specifically identify projects and can choose to utilize these funds as permitted in the final rule. In order to memorialize this, I'm recommending that the board remove the stormwater reference and allow the township to utilize the lost public sector revenue provision. So meaning this would be used to offset other capital costs. It can be used to offset operating costs related to, um, our roads, related to public safety. And so we wanted to remove the provision for the stormwater because, as we're finding out, um, because we're, we've been proactive in our stormwater projects, we are not seeing the numbers for our projects that we, um, feared when the presentation was made in August of twenty nineteen.
What do we have remaining in ARPA funds?
Uh, we have nothing left right now. We have, we allocated them across the board.
We've allocated what we have and spent them?
No, they've been spent. So I can, so they've been spent on things, um, police operations. We put them, we used two hundred thousand towards, um, the V M S C contribution this year, and the rest have been used towards our capital projects that went above and beyond the fifteen million that we borrowed in twenty twenty one.
So this move is just memorializing something that, since we've already done.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt the lost public sector revenue provision for the use of the American Rescue Plan Act funds as permitted by the U.S. Treasury Department.
Second.
Any public comment? All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, item number thirteen, request authorization to purchase recreation center access control and IP camera upgrades. Richard.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, staff included a hundred thousand dollars in the twenty twenty five budget for recreation center security upgrades. A quote from CM three Building Solutions dated April twenty third, twenty twenty five totals a hundred and eight thousand. It covers comprehensive access control and video surveillance improvements. The upgrades include migration of the existing security system to the Vigilon cloud platform, replacing outdated access control hardware with multi-technology readers, and installing a new four K and multi-sensor Vigilon cameras throughout the facility. The project will also include programming, training, and system-wide cut over. It is recommended that the board approve the quote from CM three Building Solutions and authorized vendor under the Co-Stars Cooperative Purchase Program at a total cost of a hundred and eight thousand. So in August of twenty twenty four, we just did a boilerplate quote for the budget, and it was around a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we were able to meet with staff, um, met with Floyd and did a complete walkthrough through the facility. We wound up adding four cameras, so we went from thirty cameras to thirty four cameras. So we found a couple hidden spots that we wanted to definitely make sure we had covered, especially with the new gym upgrades. Um, training, we installed this system at Public Works in September, and we have yet to provide them with some sufficient training on this new system. So we're going to bring them onboard once the system's in place, so we pay for some additional training for that. Um, and unfortunately, there was also some prevailing wage increases as a result of, um, beginning of the year till now. So with that said, for the eight thousand dollars increase, we got a lot of, um, extras included. We're at it.
Any questions? Okay, I'm going to make a motion to award the contract for the recreation center security upgrade to CM three Building Solutions under the Co-Stars Cooperative Purchase Program. Co-Stars number is zero four zero dash E twenty five dash two eight four at a total cost of a hundred and eight thousand per their proposal. Any public comment? All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, item number fourteen, as a new business, this is our department report. So the township staff has prepared reports for the month of March. Um, if there are any questions, this is for the department directors. Be available to answer them at our meeting. Additionally, this is an opportunity for the staff to bring items or issues of interest to the board, which they need input or direction. And I think our fire service department is speaking.
Sure, thank you. Uh, good evening. As you remember, a couple of months ago, I presented, uh, kind of a report of the department that underlines some of the current struggles that we are having with, uh, recruiting and maintaining volunteers and some, uh, tangible numbers as to response times and, and number of volunteers that are nationally certified uh, pro board one-level firefighters. Uh, this year, we've been working, um, to craft a plan to expand our staffing of the career, of our career side. Um, and we're looking to shift in twenty twenty six to a twenty-four seven operation with career staffing supported and supplemented by the volunteers. Um, in order to do that, there are a lot of changes that need to take place with the department. Um, the first is the hiring of sufficient staff. Uh, we're looking, um, following a model that's accepted by most northeastern United States fire companies to do a twenty-four seven hour shift followed by seventy-two hours off, which would mean we would need four platoons. Um, we would like those platoons to consist of six firefighters. That would be the optimal platoon. Um, that would be a battalion chief, uh, a captain, and then four firefighters on a shift. If that was permitted, that would require that we hire nineteen new people. And the reason we would want the six on a shift is because it's our goal to keep four on the fire truck and one incident commander, which is the five. And then we've proven that having that fifth firefighter, uh, on for the last three years has proven very beneficial, not only with time off and vacations and allowing members to attend training without compromising five people or four people on the, on the truck, but also having the member be able to get done their other responsibilities and not tying up the truck, um, to get that done. Because as you know, uh, firefighters all travel together. Um, that's the necessity of their job, that they need to all be together as a team. Um, so we don't really split up during the day. So we've been working with, uh, with Chris and, uh, human resources, and we're looking at bringing on a intern this summer. It's a human resources fire department intern to help, uh, lay out, uh, what the hiring calendar would look like to get job descriptions tidied up and some created, uh, because the paid career battalion chief position would be a new position with our staff. Been working with Blaine. Of course, the money's the most important, uh, so Blaine just kind of walked in the door and I've already gotten the time on his calendar. Um, Brian, uh, before he left, had helped me out a lot with building some spreadsheets. Um, so just transitioning that over to Blaine and then putting in the increases that come with healthcare and the latest collective bargaining agreement. Uh, the other thing that we're going to have to consider is opening the recent collective bargaining agreement to revisit, um, the battalion chief's position, uh, the need for the fire marshal on call and right-to-recall policies. We have met with the Bucks County Public Safety Training Center, who provides our firefighter testing to once again provide, uh, written and physical testing for our firefighter candidates. And we're also going to utilize them, uh, to coordinate our promotional testing. Um, so we will provide them with our policies and procedures and some questions. They'll craft, uh, a testing and scoring rubric, and then we'll invite fire chiefs from the Pennsylvania Career Fire Chiefs Association to come in and administer, um, that, that testing. So before it was more interview-based that we did in-house, but since there would be so many promotions and, uh, just the, just to keep it clean and unbiased, I think it would be better to contract with our outside agency. One of the other things, uh, that I, I, we're considering is, um, what to do with Battalion One. Uh, because, um, if we grow in staff, uh, we may have to look at making some renovations to the building. Uh, most importantly, um, the bunk room area, so that people have, uh, some private space. Right now, everybody's crammed into one bunk room. Also, um, looking at office space, so people have areas to work, and it's not a community bullpen-type setting. And then finally, what are we required to do at, and through the National Fire Protective Agency Recommended Standards and Best Practices? And right now, we're not in compliance with NFPA. Um, we don't have a good separation between the engine bay and where, uh, our people work, and that's, um, a pretty substantial concern when you look at carcinogens in the air and, and gear. Um, so NFPA recommends that there be some type of barrier between, uh, where people work and live and, and the engine bay. Um, so we, we do really well at cleaning gear and washing gear, and, um, we put the air purifiers in the truck, uh, but it is putting more of a barrier between where the gear is hung, where it's washed, where it's cleaned, because right now, uh, when we do have a fire, we respond to a fire, uh, the members are driving to Battalion Two, because that's where the washer and dryer are at. Um, so we, we need to look at, um, how we can better mitigate the concerns about, um, carcinogens and toxins in the air. So I, I'm currently in the process. I, I met with some contractors and some office furniture people just to get some ideas. And then I met with a couple architects, uh, that kind of, when we realized that we couldn't really Band-Aid it together to make it work, uh, which was the intent, um, I met with some architects. So we're going to put together a, um, RFP for a feasibility study to see, uh, what we can do at Battalion One to make it, uh, more, a better place for our needs, to suit our needs as we expand staff, and a safer place, really, with, uh, the separation between the engine bay and the areas where our guys are and girls are, are working. So we're going to work on that. Um, I think, you know, when I presented this to the FDMT, the feedback was, what's in it for us? What's our role? Are you getting rid of the volunteers? And, uh, at no point have we ever considered getting rid of the volunteers. Um, we want to be a combination department. We are a combination department. We're a premier combination department, and we still have a role for volunteers in our department. So, you know, I, I was kind of thinking with the two new trucks, uh, that are coming in, that it would be the first time Battalion Two had a brand-new fire truck ever uh, since the department was formed, that they would be, uh, oh, we're going to have this brand-new engine, but, um, they said, well, what can we do to get the tower ladder to Battalion Two? And, uh, I, I was like, well, yeah, there's a lot of steps and hoops, you know, and not that I would set them up for failure, but, I mean, they, they gotta, they gotta get through the training, and, um, they took it upon themselves to get through the training and put the drivers through, uh, national pro board and qualifications. And on May first, we'll be moving the tower full-time up to Battalion Two. Um, so we made that decision, uh, because the volunteers will be able to staff that tower so that we'll have a truck company, a ladder company, get on the road during the day and at night, and the tower will get used more. Um, because I'm, I'm sure you're aware, and as I've said before, it's, it's very hard for volunteers to get to Battalion One. Um, that stump three oh nine corridor is impossible to get across. Um, and you don't want people with blue lights on their car running the red light to get to the firehouse. So, uh, we have struggled with response times from that station at night and on the weekends. Um, so we, we, as of May first, we, we've tried it out for the month. Um, I, I'm super proud of, uh, some of our senior drivers down at Battalion Two that have gone back to fire school just to be able to wheel the tower. One of them, uh, drove to a call this morning at six thirty in the morning, brought the tower and was flying in on Pioneer Drive, and I'm like, oh my gosh, here we go. Fly your, fly, fly your flag with pride. They were out there doing it, so. Um, but we're, we're super excited to move the tower down to there. So we, we have no plans on moving away from the volunteers. Um, I'm not going to say that, uh, I hope that some of them, uh, when we expand, apply to be career firefighters in Montgomery Township, since they've been with us for so long, and I think, I think that you'll see that we'll have some that apply. Um, but I, I didn't, I don't think the resistance that I thought would be there was there, um, which I think is important. I think, um, everybody has realized that, uh, we're, we're moving in a direction now where we need to ensure that a fire truck gets on the street that's adequately staffed in, in, in adequate amount of time, a reasonable amount of time. And I also think, again, that the work-life balance is, is hurting us, where, uh, our, our people come out a lot, and we are a very busy company, so I just think they're, they're running out of time to give, so. That's my report.
I just want to thank you for that. I've been here long enough that I recall when the fire department was a disaster, and everyone was fighting and just, you've brought it a hundred years ahead of where it was, and, um, I think we all really have seen it and appreciate your love for it and the way that you did come in and take all these fighting and really build it into one. So just thank you for that.
Thanks. Team effort.
I have um some questions regarding the the finances associated with this. Is um, is that something that you're prepared to address right now?
I mean, I'm not a pair- prepared to address any like sign- numbers as far as other than that this will probably necessitate a tax increase. I I just don't have, I had the numbers before uh before the collective bargaining agreement and with five people. And I think I placed that in that original report I wrote it um where it was like a a mill, a little bit more than a mill um increase, but all those numbers were preliminary before I had the collective bargaining agreement was signed. So I'm meeting with Blaine in two weeks to sit down and get the numbers and the spreadsheets. And I ju- I've just been waiting for Blaine to get in before I bombarded him with numbers.
Okay, because you know, I I understand the need behind this. Obviously, you guys have been great about apprising us about the um, the issue that we've been facing in recruiting volunteers uh and the need to continually add additional paid staff to provide the the necessary fire safety services. And we are responsible for providing for the community. And so I understand that. Um, but this is a big jump, nineteen full-time employees to add. Um, and you know, the expenses for that compound year after year. So there's a big number associated with that. And then we also have to now renovate facilities. Um, and there's going to be, again, you know, a big price tag associated with that. And so what I'm wondering is, um, because you had already referenced um moving forward with an HR intern to be hired this summer to help um kind of prepare all of those job descriptions. But I'm feeling as if what I would like to see first is more of a um like a full plan. Uh, and then I think we also need to share that with the community uh so that we can really firmly establish, you know, what is the plan, what are the needs, what's the cost going to be associated with all of these components?
Agreed, a hundred percent.
Yeah, to Bill's point, you know, Blaine started three weeks ago and there, you know, we had things that were very pressing for him to do. Um, we now have the collective bargaining um agreement in place. HR intern, you know, we're going to need those job descriptions regardless of whether we grow or not because they need to be updated from back when they were first done. Um, the thought was that we would meet with Blaine, put together some numbers, do a presentation, show you, you know, what Bill said tonight, what each um squad would look like, if you will. Um, the need for it to show you the number of volunteers versus the volunteers we had in the past. Um, I know he has shared in the past the time to get on scene compared to when it's volunteers versus career, just because the career are already positioned in Battalion One where the ladder is. Um, but that was the plan to come forward and show you something in a formal presentation. And then that we could then put on our website and social media, you know, because not everybody is going to obviously um stream the meeting, but if they see it on social media that this is going to happen or it has happened, they can go back on there and watch it and and get apprised of what we need to do.
So when do we think we'll have more sort of a like a?
I would say June. I would say June at the earliest.
And?
Because I don't want to come in with numbers and then say, oh, we forgot that. I want to make sure that everything is tied together so that the numbers we give you are the most accurate we can present.
And in terms of the facility costs associated with this too, I know you talked about doing an RFP. Do you think you'll also have uh responses to that RFP?
No, no, that won't come until later in the summer. Because we're going to put the RFP out for, to see what the cost of the feasibility study is, then come to the board and get authorization to do a feasibility study. And then so we would probably be looking at the fall.
And is this something in terms of the hiring that we think that is going to be staged? You know, so like set up one platoon first and then grow like, you know, to two, three and four?
I don't, I don't think um we can stagger this. I I just because of the way that the platoons would rotate. Um, if you have twenty-four hours on, um, you know, the the police work a twelve-hour shift and you say, why don't firefighters work a twelve-hour shift? That would help us with the stagger. Well, that would mean that the firefighters coming in from seven at night till seven in the morning or six in would be getting paid to sleep and they would not be doing their job. They would just be coming in. And so the reason why the fire department looks at a twenty-four hour shift is because they can work all day. Um, and then, you know, the, obviously, they they would, there would be, they would be able to sleep, but they're not on patrol at night and they can't do inspections at night and they're not interacting with the public at night because everybody's asleep. So, you know, I don't, I could look at staggering like how that would work. But, you know, we we need to ensure that we have the right amount of people on the truck to do the job. Um, and you know, NFPA recommends four to five people on an engine. That's what we've been, even though we don't have a minimum standard decided by the collective bargaining agreement. Um, since I've been here, we've been, the 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 goal has been to always have four on the truck and one in the car to consume, to assume incident command. So um staggering is is hard because I don't know how we would do that to keep four on the truck and keep the we basically need a police, their squad, like a squad rotation, so.
And did you say your goal, the goal is to have this all in place by next year?
I would, I was hoping that we could be ready to go with everybody hired and switch to that um twenty-four seventy-two by May first of next year.
Really?
Um, I think if we, if we were given permission um that we could get promotional exams done in January and February and then test with Bucks for firefighters in March. Um, interview and and be ready by May first.
But not the facilities up update, like there's no way that we would be able to have?
No, I, in, we would have to make it work. I mean, uh, we we would, we would make it work. Um, I just, long-term sustainability is is more what I'm coming to with it. If, you know, I shouldn't say this out loud, but if you were like, you can't renovate the building, well, I would make it work, right? But uh that would be a short-term Band-Aid um with long-term. Because right now, um, and you've been to Battalion One, the bunk rooms are very small. So six people sleeping in that one bunk room is tight, plus there's no privacy. Um, there's no place for people to really work outside the cubicle area. So the buildings are not really conducive for fire department operations, but we make them work every day. It's just, the other part is we don't have anywhere to put anybody's stuff. So, I mean, we only have five lockers in the whole, in the whole bunk room. And turnout gear, we actually uh Upper Morelands closing a station. So I was able to get gear racks for them for free that we could put on the wall so we have enough turnout gear racks for everybody. But it's more personal lockers. We, if we hired nineteen people, they have nowhere to put their stuff, so.
And if you have um male and female firefighters, you know, there's an issue in terms of, you know, um locker areas and things like that. Um, to Bill's point, you know, ideally, and and this board, it has nothing to do with this board, obviously, the two battalions ideally would have been one battalion better located so that the volunteers could get to it. Because to, again, to the chief's point, volunteers put their blue lights on, they are not, they're not given the same autonomy that a police officer is or a career firefighter is to be able to use preemption at the signal and and, you know, respond. The police can put preemption on EMS, can put preemption on volunteers with the blue light, hope for the best that somebody's looking in their rearview mirror and move to the sides that they can navigate through. But to get over to Battalion One is a real challenge for them. So the feasibility study would show us just what are we looking at? And then the board could try to make an informed decision based on that and then look at how soon we would do that, how we'd fund it. You know, we, we've tried to, you know, in the most recent years, when the general fund has a surplus, the board has given us authorization to move that surplus into capital because we borrowed fifteen million dollars for our five-year capital plan, you know, which we are just about finished with, you know, tonight's another traffic signal that, again, has been on the list for a long time. We're actually getting to it. And I've also in your packet given you the list from Gilmore that shows all the projects that are underway is related to traffic signals. And you can see how many are, you know, moving off of there now. So um the goal is always to just give you as much information as possible so that you can make an informed decision and give us direction.
Chief? Got it?
Uh, thank you for allowing me.
Thank you. Anything else from the directors? Russ? Great. Okay, um, item number fifteen. Township manager report, Carol McCreary.
Thank you. Um, in your packet, I have given you a report on a number of items. Um, I'm going to start at the end if you don't mind, um, just because it was such a successful day. Um, on Thursday, we held our second annual staff professional development day. This time we had it over at the rec center. Um, the theme was talking about my generation, how we get along and get the work done. We had two speakers in the morning. Um, one talked about getting out of our comfort zone. Um, we had another speaker who talked about, you know, dealing with the various generations in the workforce and how we're wired the way we are and why we work the way we do. Um, but I think the best part was in the afternoon. We had a panel of employees. We had five employees because for the first time we have five generations in the workforce. So we had representation from the silent generation, uh, the baby boomers, um, Gen X, the millennials, um, and Gen Z. Um, Eva Comas, who we have hired um to help out in public information and administration, represented Gen Z. And just as an aside, when we were talking about college experiences, we had Floyd Schaper, who um represented um baby boomers, who's um got a scholarship to Clemson and whose parents just dropped him off and said, have a good run, and that was it. Um, then we got to Ava and forgetting how young Ava is, um, Ava's freshman year in college was the pandemic. And so she was a senior in high school when, you know, prom was denied and graduations were outside and all those normal experiences. And it transitioned into her freshman year in college. So her, her first couple of years in college were very different than a typical college experience. But um we asked them a wide variety of questions from first jobs to first movie they saw to, you know, just a number of things. And um engaged everybody who was sitting there and it was, it was a really good day.
Sounds great.
Yes. Um, the other thing positive, uh, we had the community recreation center's gym floor is up and running and um, we're getting nothing but great feedback. Um, it looks wonderful when we're in there. Um, contractors did a phenomenal job. Um, everybody was very understanding that it needed to get done, even though we had a number of, you know, weeks where we couldn't have activity in there. Um, but then as soon as it was available, activity picked up too. Um, as Floyd told you, I remember, I'll never forget the budget presentation when he said to this board that his goal was to have that parking lot full and that parking lot is full. There is a whole host of activities going on at any given point in time. Um, work at the Penn Medicine Site continues as drilling for the geothermal well system has begun and crews will be on-site daily to meet permit requirements and complete inspections. Installation of a water line loop there around the property is now underway. Northwell's Water Authority and a third-party firm, Pinoni, are both on-site every day to ensure the work is done properly and safely. Pinoni is also performing compaction testing during the backfilling. This stage of the project will continue over the next several weeks. Additionally, in response to a number of residents' concerns that have been expressed to the board and myself about speeding on Decal Pike, the Highway Safety Unit, specifically Officer Jenkins, has um directed speed enforcement detail in the area. And he has also requested that PennDOT conduct a speed study since it is a state road. So we expect a response back in the next several weeks. Um, he reached out to Don Santafonte, who is in charge of um directing staff to go out and do their studies. And then we'll see what they come back with. And then finally, um, in response to the discussion concerning the traffic calming measures on Grays Lane and after discussion with staff and the traffic engineers, um, we are recommending the following. We would like the board to keep the installation of chicanes in place for six months, allowing the public time to adjust to it and our highway safety unit and traffic engineers' time to monitor the speed in the area to determine the effectiveness of the traffic calming measure. Uh, the Highway Safety Unit will conduct directed speed enforcement of this area with zero tolerance. So that means there will not be warnings given out. If someone is found speeding through that area, they will be given a ticket, um, including any points that apply with it. And then we would like to engage another engineering firm, a separate traffic engineer, to analyze the entirety of Grays Lane to determine if any additional measures are warranted. And then that report and any other analyses that are done, um, including by the Highway Safety Unit along Grays Lane in that area where the uh chicanes are in place, will be discussed with the Public Safety Committee and then shared with the Board of Supervisors at a public meeting. And if there's a majority board consensus, we'll proceed as outlined.
Okay, so I I do think we need to talk about this topic a little bit.
Certainly.
More. Um, I I'll kick it off. I shared um two weeks ago and we had all of our residents here from Grays Lane and around the area. Um, because it's out there, I too felt like let's give it some time. Um, just to, to be quite honest, to see if, um, you know, it is an effective calming method so that we have it in, I'll say in our back pocket for lack of a better term, um, to be considered elsewhere or whatever the case may be. But I will say this, after all of the residents that came and shared their um thoughts and, you know, their didn't like it, didn't like what we did. Um, I definitely feel, and I I will be very honest, if I lived there and that was there, I too would want it to come out. I'm being very honest about that. Um, I just feel that since it's there, I just want to get some data so we just have it. Like, is this something we would even think about somewhere else or is it done and it but it didn't work? And it's not anything we would consider since it's already um in place. That's where I'm at with it right now. So I welcome everybody else to weigh in.
Oh, I'll start because I live in that neighborhood. And so um I do live there. I'm on Twining Road. And I I too listen to all of the feedback that we heard from everyone um about their experiences with it. I, I weigh that uh the feedback about how it appears um against the the needs of the community and wanting to be sort of moderate in this moment to to make sure that we don't throw, you know, uh, throw the, uh, what is it, the baby away with the bathwater here. Uh, we did this because we needed to do it. It was justified in terms of the data. Uh, we're doing it for public safety reasons. I travel along that road. I don't find it difficult to navigate the chicanes. I don't find it to be particularly embarrassing myself. Um, I was concerned and and I felt like some of the testimony was compelling as it related to people as they were walking as pedestrians along that and feeling maybe unsafe as as vehicles were navigating the chicanes and the vehicles were veering toward the sidewalks. So I think it does bear further study. I'm, so I'm in support of taking a closer look at this and seeing if there, you know, with fresh eyes especially, um, to see if there isn't another way that we could calm the traffic there effectively. But I do think, you know, taking the action was justified, needs to be done, is certainly, I I'm I would rather see us take action there to prevent what is eventually going to be, someone is going to be struck by a vehicle. Um, and I think that we have a responsibility to take action there. And I definitely hear everybody's feedback. You were loud and clear on this. Um, but I I think that monitoring this for the nut, for another six months, potentially doing another study is the smarter way to approach this, to make sure that, um, you know, we're doing what's in the best long-term interest for our community.
I'll chime in with a few other thoughts. Um, first is I I I feel as if we really need to take a a direct commentary from the people in particular that this is e- exactly in front of their homes. I feel as if the impact on those exact homeowners is something that um we can't ignore. So even saying six months, I I don't know if that's a fair ask. I would like to actually have uh some sort of a community uh interaction with them. Uh, the other thing that I think is very important is to find out how did this happen? Um, I think that it was, it was a sound study. I think it was warranted. I think it was implemented. The big law um miss here was the communication aspect of it, that how did that happen? And so I know we have things in place. Um, and we have systems of of having um different um meeting groups that that we can have committees. And those, I I thought that these should, this should have fallen into some of those committees. Public Safety Committee could have had this as an ongoing monthly um communication between departments and and making sure that we're coordinating that effort with the community. That was a a miss because we didn't have it in the, into our committees. And I want to make sure that we do not ever, ever, ever repeat this kind of error in again because it is, it is to me an almost unforgivable thing. And for that reason, I think that we have to very much listen to the um, the the people that live in those exact uh Grays Lane residences that are adjacent to the um, the chicanes themselves. So um, I I hear that everyone says, oh, they're there, let let them. But I feel as if the the impact is too great on those. Um, so I I would ask for additional in- information gathering from those, from those uh residents.
And I'm going to chime in as a resident of the general area as well.
And I'm going to chime in as a resident of the general area as well, over by Canterbury. And it did come before public safety, but it came to us after it was a done deal already. It wasn't a, you know, what do you think? Can we investigate more? This was more of a, this is what the engineers have said. This is what they've come up with. And that's when it came to Public Safety Committee. Excuse me. I also listened to everybody intently because yes, we live there and we all live in Montgomery Township. This is our concern to keep everyone safe in one way or another, however we can best do it. That's what we want to do. That's our heart. That's why we basically volunteer to do this. This isn't a, this isn't a full-time job. Many residents believe that we have an office here, that we're here full-time. We're not. We have other jobs that we do. We have other things and this is, we come here as volunteers because we love our communities. So I, I need, I think I need people to understand that as well. We're not just coming in and out of here. We love the community and we're here to serve the community. Um, what I did hear also is that within two weeks of being installed, traffic went down five miles per hour. Okay, that's significant. Is it enough? I don't know. If it was right in front of my house, how would I feel? I'm not sure. Um, because when I look out of my window doing dishes and I can see, um, I, I could see Canterbury. I could see Upper State. I can see everybody zooming past. And I'm thinking, okay, maybe it needs to come here. Maybe not. But how would I feel if it was there? Because they are speeding past my area as well. Um, I don't know if six months is too much. Um, maybe we do need some time to evaluate, to assess. And again, this is what our engineers, the experts have told us. This was our quote, best idea that came forward. Is it best? I, I, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I did listen to our experts. Um, I think some time to evaluate what is going on. And again, do we ever want to do this anywhere else? Right now? I don't know. But according to the people that live there, no. And then we did get a few emails that said, yes, we're in agreement. We see the traffic is going down. So it, it's, I struggle with it. I really, really struggle with it. And that's why I think I would be more in line with, let's maybe not give it six months, maybe three months, maybe four months. And definitely another study has to be done. Um, and not only how has traffic and speeding been affected? But is there something else that we maybe missed? Maybe that we should have done? And I think those type of assessments need to be done.
Okay, I'll go last. I, um, made some phone calls today, knowing that we would have public comment tonight. So I talked to five people that were at the meeting two weeks ago, just asked them what they thought. Have they seen any improvement? All of them said no. One person said the only improvement she has seen is when there are cars going both ways. So on a regular time, when there's only one car, they're still flying down. They're ignoring our attempt to slow them down. Her concern was that the only time people are slowing down are when there's two cars. And she felt that was nerve wracking. She has a new driver. Um, that seems to be the story that I've heard. Everyone has said, we listened, we heard all of you. I do think that we failed. There were mistakes. We didn't get the letters out. We never had a community meeting. All these things should have happened. Had they, I believe everyone in the room would have said, no, thank you. It's been a speeding problem from the beginning of time. We would rather let it be. That's what I've heard from people. So I'm going to say, I think two weeks, it's, it's been a month. A month in my mind is long enough. Everyone that we've seen, except a few people hate it. I would never want it in front of my house. I don't want it in front of anyone's house. So I'm going to be bold here and make a motion that we authorize public works to take it down as soon as possible within their timeframe. Is there a second? Yes.
Technically, you're not allowed to take an official action.
Okay.
However, if it was communicated clearly to the staff, what the majority will of the board would be without a formal motion. I'm sure our staff is, uh, with it enough to know what the will would be at that time. So I, since it wasn't advertised ahead of time for, for an official action. Continue to converse as you will on the manager's report. Um, and, uh, hopefully at the end of that conversation, there will be a clear direction for staff.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, I appreciate, keep us legal. Any conversing?
I just think that it bears further investigation before we pull it out. And it has reduced speeds. Um, it, it's, it's something that, you know, visually may not be very appealing, but has been effective. And, uh, before we pull it out, we ought to have a, a plan in place for addressing, addressing the, the problem. The problem is still going to exist and just pulling it out doesn't address that problem. So I'd rather have a plan in place first before we take any further action.
I would take it out to keep everyone happy and also engage in the independent traffic engineer study. I think these things could be done at the same time.
There are, are limited number of options to address the, the traffic calming there though. And I know that a lot of them were considered in this process. So, you know, I'd rather have a report come back to say, all right, you know, this is, this is how we think we want to proceed. And, you know, we just need more time to be able to prepare. I know, I feel like a knee jerk reaction here, um, is, is the wrong move. We should be measured and we should also do a better job of communicating what those next steps look like.
I think whatever we do, we need to pull the community in to have some of those conversations as well. Um, not, not that, you know, we don't have to make hard decisions on our own here. But I think that we need to be better informed and we need to make sure that they are part of at least the discussions for that. Because, um, the impact on their exact property is to me, um, paramount to. You know, their livelihood. So I, I feel as if we, we can't not have those, just, you know, saying, let's leave it in place and do more studies. To me, that's delaying the inevitable. I, I think if people want it out, we should find that out for sure.
When you say the property, are you referring to like the loss of the on-street parking specifically?
Loss of on-street parking, difficulties for whatever it be, um, snow removals, different difficulties for trap, uh, their garbage pickup. There's a lot of issues that this is impacting their property values.
But we've made other, uh, you know, modifications like, you know, as for instance, the crosswalks that went in that someone referred to as the helicopter pad. Uh, but we also know that that had no impact on property values. And, you know, we don't really know for a fact that it's going to have a negative property, uh, impact on property value. Because those values are driven largely by, um, supply and demand. And we live in a really desirable community and, and I, you know, you can't say definitively that this is going to have an impact on property value.
U S News World Report, May fourth, nineteen, May fourth, twenty twenty-three. Yellow lines, which indicate a higher traffic volume can negatively impact value. Location, location, location for a reason can impact value and how long it will take to find a buyer. Harder to sell, more time on the market. Expect speed to be higher than twenty-five miles per hour, which may make speeding. Which may make spending time in the front yard feel unsafe with pets or young kids. It's not me making this up. And Beth, to your point, we had sixteen people at the meeting two weeks ago who came and made public comment, all said to remove it. I think we've heard from the community.
We've heard other comments too, from the community that were in support. People, people who, who have come to me personally, you, you live in the neighborhood as well and are really happy to see that we did that. I even had someone, uh, one of our sewer authority members, um, comment. Now, interestingly, he drives a Tesla. Oh, he says he's not the Tesla driver that's always speeding through there. Um, uh, and he noted that his Tesla automatically navigates that curve and slows down to do so. Um, I, I don't know if that's like a feature that you could turn on and off. Apparently one of, one local Tesla driver has it turned off. But, uh, but it's, yeah, and his car actually slows down to drive through there. Anyway, don't hear me as saying I love this solution, uh, and I think it should be permanent. That's not what I'm saying. I just think that, you know, we should have a measured response here. Take the time to analyze this and, and come up with a better plan.
I'm all for better plans. Can we ask for public comment?
I was just going to write it as, can we ask?
Sense of consensus for everybody, like, you know, this doc said, you know, yes, but it doesn't sound like she's saying now. She's saying, um, I'm not trying to discount the communication part aside. I need to see if there's board consensus so that we know what we're doing tomorrow morning.
Well, can we hear the, the comments from the people that are here? Can we have public comment?
You are permitted to real open public comment.
Okay. So did anyone have any? Please, and if you don't mind, um, state your name.
My name is Dave Sherman. I live at one oh three Forest Trail Drive. I spoke, uh, two weeks ago as well. Um, so we talk about communication and involving the community in that communication. I, I think we're perpetuating that problem this evening with the, the township manager burying a report in page one hundred and three. Of, of a, of a document that nobody's read. Five of us show up for a meeting tonight. And there's a recommendation to extend the study for six months. I can tell you after, after thirty days, it doesn't work. Yeah, so it went down five miles an hour. There's still people going up, up the street, straight up the street. Um, some people that approach, if there's two cars at, at the same time, some people get scared about a head-on collision. There's potential safety, major safety conditions, uh, at play here. Not to mention the fact that Candace, on a number of occasions, has mentioned that property value is going to go down. And we're talking about extending this up the street, up Grays Lane, where there's more, where there's potentially more, more homes, losing parking. Property value is going down. I, I, I could show you a picture if you'd like. I took a picture tonight at five thirty-four. This is a picture of a tractor trailer driving up Grays Lane at, sorry, five thirty-five. Does this look like a tractor trailer that's observing this, the, the traffic conditions?
Can you bring it so we can see it? Yeah. It's a moving truck. So that's going to be all of May, June, July, at least when people are moving.
Yeah.
So it's not two-way traffic when there's a truck and that's like any other small street. I grew up in the city, so if there was a traffic truck coming the other way, you waited, you know, if it's a big truck. Or they let you come first. Like, I mean, that's, that is something that is, is monitored. That's a police thing that, you know, okay, it's a moving truck. People need to move. People, you know, it's not, it's not a constant either.
No, but.
And I, I understand what you're saying.
Trailer cannot slow down as fast as a car can. And if there's an approaching vehicle, that car is going to get squeezed off the road and there's going to be a car accident. For thirty-five years, I've talked about this.
Going twenty-five miles an hour, they shouldn't get squeezed off the road. I'm sorry, Mr. Sherman.
Uh, I'm sorry too, but a tractor trailer cannot brake as fast as a car. Okay?
I understand that.
If there's a car approaching, that tractor trailer cannot stop in time for that car to squeeze by. There will be a car accident. It's, it's, it's physics. I took pictures of the chicanes. These chicanes have been hit multiple times. That's just one. They're on both sides.
The delineators?
Yes, delineators.
Can I see? Is that, that's one thing I've heard, but I haven't been, you see a black truck on my, it's been mowing, but I haven't seen.
Now they're marked up. They're definitely.
Yeah, they are marked up. I've driven it quite a few times. I don't understand how they've gotten marked up. Is it because of the squeezing, like you're saying?
There's cars. Whatever the reason it's happening. And my point is, my, my real point here is, is for thirty-five years, we've had. These conditions in this neighborhood. And my suggestion at the last meeting was to put some police monitoring the situation. We don't need any more studies. We don't need any of this stuff. Put a few policemen in the neighborhood periodically. Measuring the speed, ticketing people. I guarantee you, it's going to stop people from speeding through the neighborhood.
I think so too. If there's zero tolerance and you're getting a ticket, you are going to slow down. And in the past, I think we've tried to be kind to the residents because you know it's your neighbors.
I agree. There's no need for more study. The study is, the study should be bringing the police in to see how many tickets they can hand out and generate revenue for the township.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can actually speak to some all enforcement stuff since the beginning of April. Our, since April first, we've been out there doing selective enforcement for traffic details. We've done a total of five different selective enforcements. We've clocked over two hundred and eighteen vehicles. Um, of those two hundred and eighty vehicles, we had one violation of thirty-eight miles per hour that was cited. Besides that, the other vehicles, the highest speed was thirty-three miles per hour. And the traffic counter is out there right now. The results aren't in.
Hi, I'm Catherine Stout. I live on one oh seven Cove Circle. Um, my kids ride bikes and run through the neighborhood. And they hate being on our street, not our circle, but on the street in the neighborhood that they've grown up in. Because they have to walk the dog and when he uses the bathroom close to where a car is coming in, they're the ones bending over, picking it up. As a car is coming at them at thirty-one miles an hour, thirty-three. Whereas before, two cars could easily pass each other at thirty-three miles an hour without them feeling unsafe. There are ten buses that cross that intersection every day. Now, you, Mr. Wagner, Chief Wagner, you, the fire truck, I saw it go past this morning. How did it navigate? Thankfully perfectly fine because there was no other car going that way. But I couldn't make a left because I saw you coming and as a courtesy, didn't try to go through because that would have held you up. They weren't because it was on its way back. Obviously, if the lights were on, I wouldn't have done it. But the lights weren't on, so I should have been able to drive down my road with you driving next to me. But I couldn't because your truck couldn't safely go down that road with another car on the opposite side. It is a problem. I understand you want to say, we already have it in place. Why not do the study? Why put more money in something that everybody is telling you, if you live there, it doesn't feel right. It feels wrong. We came out as a public. We told you how we felt. It's not going to change just because it goes to thirty miles an hour instead of thirty-three. We're telling you now, something has to be done, fix it. And we would rather live with the way it was than this. Please, you say you hear us, but you actually have to hear what we're saying and act on it on our behalf. Because that's what we need you to do. We tried it. It's not ideal. A month really is enough time to see that, yes, it worked a little bit. But ticketing probably will work just as efficiently. And everybody knows this area is a huge target. So I am sure for a while it'll be fine. And then it'll be another place that we'll complain about. But please hear us and speak for us. Fix this problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Heather Sand, I'm at one oh two Cove Circle. I'm trying to remain as calm as possible because from what I remember. When it was a packed house and you were told that you were listening to us and you said. How do you all feel? You do realize that we would have to take it out? And you had a sea of hands going up. You had, you had somebody that asked the gentleman that was over here about the study. Could you please show us the residents the study? And he said, there really wasn't a study, a true study. And then it was done. We went to work and school one day. Everything was fine, completely unaware. We come home and we see this spectacle. And yeah. We come home and we see this spectacle and yeah, it was a spectacle at first. But it goes beyond even the value of our homes, which really is important. But speaking to, you know, uh Miss Bamford, the idea is it goes beyond the home. We see it every day, multiple times, and like Candace had said, it is true. When there's one car going, they're going. We've seen it. We're there. We see it. It's only when the two cars go by that you try to slow down and then you're going like this. And it's just crazy and a lot of us have kids that are near the age of getting their first. Driver's license. What do you do with that? I mean, we can't possibly expect our kids to be doing, yes, it is part of the driver's test, I guess. But seriously speaking, this is dangerous. You saw the picture that Dave Sherman actually shared. It clearly shows that that truck is not anywhere in between those lines. I can tell you that I I sit there, my daughter just told me, she's like, Mom, how come you're still doing? And I'm like, well, because I'm a role follower teacher, but I have to tell you. That in my smaller car, very easy. We have a bigger car as well, not as easy and I'm not going, you know. I I'm right there, so I'm not even going because I have to make a right. And it still is a little bit of a challenge when you have a bigger car. Now, when you have that major big truck going on. That's a problem. I can't tell you how many times in the few weeks that we've been squiggling around. And slowing down, that there's a big car here and a big car there. You can't tell me that there isn't any small fear that you're just going to go head on. Yes, it may not be at fifty miles an hour, but you're still, there's still a chance. And the chance is greater than when you had wider areas to go. You guys also heard from two young ladies, okay, who actually shared how dangerous they felt. And you said, wow, I appreciate the fact that we had two young ladies that actually shared. You also heard from a bus driver. You guys said, yes, you actually heard from a bus driver. Which the kids actually shared how dangerous it was, that they couldn't even get through those lines. And you said, yes. That was really important. And then you heard from so many of a packed house that was telling you. And why can't we try this and why can't we try that? You did have one resident who commended your efforts and we all did. But even agreed that it may not have been the best plan. Now, we walked away after we heard all of you say, you know. We're sorry, we didn't share this information with you, but we will take this into advisement. So after about a week, I'm like, okay, I even had conversations. I'm like, didn't hear anything, wonder what's going on. And then today, I get the page one hundred and one. Okay, I'm gonna tell you, like you guys had said, this is not your first job. So for many of us, a hundred and one is probably not gonna be where most people are gonna say, oh, look. They listen to us. No, so I just got this and I thought it was important maybe just to share this. Keep the installation of the chicane's in place for a minimum of six months, a minimum. Now, I know I've been around the block, know what a minimum probably means. Allowing the public time to adjust to it. What does that tell the residents that are actually hoping that you've listened to us? It's saying you're not listening to us. You're not listening and I think we're gonna start to get tired of it. So why? That's my question.
So just one thing, Carolyn, those were just recommendations. It wasn't that that's what's gonna happen. That was just what our township manager had put out as recommendations to us to talk about it and, you know, and then.
Wording is so.
I'm sorry.
The wording is really pretty.
I hear you. I hear that, but please understand it is just a recommendation that she's, you know, suggesting to us.
Yeah.
Um so that we could just do this, have a dialogue and, you know, I and I also hear you when you say page. Never actually counted all the pages, a hundred and something pages, but um we knew it was going to be an agenda item this evening. So we we absolutely knew we were gonna talk about it and bring it up. Um so I I open it back up. Does anyone feel any differently?
Thank you. I did wanna also add that um the majority of us are mothers of boys. School's gonna be out soon, which is when these boys tend to get in trouble and I could just see that this could be some sort of challenge. Or, you know, when kids are home from school and they don't have enough to do, they just find ways to get in trouble. So I just think it's another reason to get rid of it.
I'll just, I'm gonna sound a little bit like a a broken record here, but what I'm not. But I wanna say one thing I'm not saying, which is that I'm I'm sold on that this is the solution. And and I'm not saying that I think it should be permanent and I think absolutely after hearing all of the feedback. That we did from the neighbors that this is something that needs to be addressed and potentially removed and replaced with something else. I just wanna have that something else in place first before we remove it. Because we do have a persistent speeding problem there and I think we'll see a greater number of people come out the moment. A pedestrian is struck on that street, so. And and I think that there's a real possibility that that could happen. So that's where I'm like, you know, we wanted to address this, we knew we needed to address this. All the data says, yes, we have to address this for the sake of public safety. I just wanna have a plan in place to say, you know, what else are we going to do? Maybe that plan is just enforcement. Maybe that's more stringent enforcement, but we still have to come up with that plan. So I'm just saying, give us the, give us time to be able to develop a a feasible plan for addressing this. That's it.
Well, I do, I as far as enforcing uh with the police, that should be happening. We should be doing that. Like that's just definite should, that should happen now, me, you know, effective immediately. I um I I am leaning towards, I I mean, what resonated for me, besides all of you speaking today. Every hand went up in here last two weeks ago when we said, do you want it out? And that means maybe nothing will be there, you know, and every hand, with the exception of one. Except for one. Every hand went up and so, you know, that's where I kinda, you know, I. My thought again, I I say it needs to come out. I'm just saying while it's there. To let's have the opportunity to get some real data around it to see, is it a calming method? Will even think about anywhere else or no, it doesn't work and it's not anything we'll even think about on the go forward. I. Yeah, that's where I'm at. I think we should take it out. I'm I'm to the other side now.
How long would it take us to get a real study? Hey, Damon was here at the last meeting and kinda mentioned there wasn't a real study. How long was that?
So I think the misunderstanding is Gilmore didn't, they did a study in twenty twenty-one and as a result, we put the crosswalks in. Um I checked with um the minutes, public safety, this came three times on the public safety minutes in twenty twenty-three. The discussion about speeding on Gray's Lane and the different alternatives. The Highway Safety Unit did studies, those those speed devices that are out there actually have computers in there, they calculate, right, they calculate all that. So while Gilmore didn't do it, Officer Jenkins was there and he had the studies in front of him. The reason I suggested a third-party engineering firm is one. Um it was evident that some of the statements that were made by Mr. Drummond were being discounted by the public and I wanted to. I didn't want Gilmore to do another study and then say, well, of course, now Gilmore is gonna say this because they're the ones who recommended it. So a third party doing it, there are other traffic engineers that municipalities use that we could.
Be nice to have some contract.
Somebody and and not to put necessarily more chicane's in, but to say, okay, can speed tables be used anywhere? Um to reiterate the fact of why we can't use stop signs, to reiterate the fact why we have to get Penn dot approval when we do things. Even though it's a township road and to look at, maybe there's other options that we didn't even consider because they weren't brought forward. So that was the idea for the third party. The reason I said a minimum of six months wasn't to imply nine months or twelve months, but to give it six months. To s- to get more counts from the police, to see what the um the enforcement arm looks like. But it's all at the board's discretion. If you tell us tonight, if the majority of the board says. We think, you know, they should come out, then Public Works will work on getting that and we will paint someone to re-blacktop that area to take those lines out. That that was it. And the reason, so I've had people, you know, um followed up at the, you know, as a result of the meeting. Reiterating some of their same comments. I wanna be able to, if somebody calls and says, where are you with that? I wanna be able to say, well, actually, the board met last night and as a result, this is what we're doing and we would put it out on our social media platforms. That's that's the sole reason why I included in the manager's report, just to give you update. Because the other us, you know, hot button issue is the pen medicine work. The more work that goes on there, the more residents are commenting and saying. I didn't know about this, what's happening next, you know, we direct them to the webpage that we've established, so that's that's the reason it was on there tonight. And as far as it being a hundred and three pages, those check reports that are in there, which the board gets, I would take up a bulk of that. We can in the future pull those reports out and make them separate so that they're not actually part of the physical packet, but they're given to you.
So as an appendix or something. Yeah, exactly. That'd be great. My my statement on this is I don't doubt that this is not an effective um pro- program. I think that, yes, this is probably, there's no question in my mind that chicane's can work. The issue is, I don't know that this is the time and place to do it. So my question is, if we remove this, can't the delineators are the big bigger cost of this of this project, I believe? Can they be removed and reused in another project down the road where we're where we find another time and place? That my location that is is worthy of of that? And could we then try it there with plenty of um community input, et cetera? Could we use those delineators elsewhere? So therefore, there would be a cost. Not not saying that we wouldn't do it if we couldn't do the cost, but can we reuse and repurpose those delineators? That would be a question for you.
Yeah, the delineators could be reused if that's what we're directed to do.
Just bolted to the.
Right.
Black top.
And my my recollection was that was about ninety percent of the cost, the paint and the labor was the other cost, which was about a thousand of. Maybe seven hundred, eight hundred dollars of it.
Yeah, the labor probably wasn't even that much for the time that we had into putting those up.
Right.
Now, once the the damaged ones, there you wouldn't be, would you still be able to use those as well? Some of them look cracked.
We would, we would have to go out and.
Okay, so we have people here begging us. It sounds like I'm willing to take it out. Ms. Staub is willing to take it out. Ms. Ware is willing to take it out.
You've convinced me, like, let's take them out then.
Take them out.
I I would like to know what we're going to do to to stop the speeding and if it's targeted enforcement.
Let's start, let's start with that.
Everybody's gonna get tickets if you're speeding, even if you're a neighbor.
I will very happily put the word out. The police will stop you and ticket you and put points on your on your license and your insurance will go up. So stop speeding in the neighborhood.
What I am worried about is that we're setting a precedent here because enough complaints and, oh, well, you know, like to to me.
They'll pay into the public pressure.
But the the difference to me was there was an error on our end. And to me, that is the, that is the difference maker.
But that aside, if the speed went from forty miles an hour to twenty, I'd be like, you know what? I'm so sorry. This is really doing its job.
Well, we only measured it for two weeks and it did.
We haven't. I'm struggling with it, but the complaints are out there. I I understand that.
I think it's gonna come down.
Yeah, I'm getting texts right now saying, take, nix the chicane. Start ticketing offenders. This is gonna cost us. So, but people have spoken, take it down.
Yeah.
But, you know, we should continue to assess.
And continue to assess and consider this another place because I think it may be another location, this could still work.
Well, no, no, but my point was that we need to continue to assess this particular stretch of the road. And the threat that it poses to our community and to the pedestrians walking along, walking their dogs along the road. People speeding by, you know, whether or not they're going through a chicane, you know. There's the possibility that they can struck, strike a pedestrian. We've seen pedestrians getting struck in other places. Both in that neighborhood and outside of the neighborhood. So, you know, we know that we have to address this issue, but I would. Uh again, going back to what I said back in twenty twenty-four, say, can we please make sure that we communicate? And draw the community into the conversation before we do anything else.
And I think we still need to do the other, the independent traffic study to figure out what's going on there. Because it was residents that came to the chief, that came to public safety saying, you have to do something because people are speeding. And we tried different things that didn't work. This caught everybody's attention, so, you know, is that enough to say? Slow down because now you're getting ticketed? I I don't know. I I don't know. But I understand and I hear the complaints and I I. I I hear and I feel your hearts on this as well.
I I think the biggest thing is is uh, how would you feel if it was in front of your house?
Oh, I I was honest. I I would not be happy.
I mean, I know you're you you're definitely for the 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 measure, the traffic calming measure. But hon- honestly, ask yourself, if you had this, if if you had this thing in front of your house, how would you feel about it?
I think when we um and uh um, you know, the other supervisors that were here the evening that we said, we said yes to it. The picture we saw was kind of an aerial view.
It was very mild.
Very different than when we actually saw it, so.
Yeah, it was like mild. I'm like, yeah, this looks great.
So when, so when it actually um, someone sent a picture and I I really did think there was a mistake. I thought a mistake had happened, but then, of course, you know, that was, put the rest, no, this is, and then I had to do some work. I I went online, like, okay, is this really used places?
And it really is.
So then I did truly see that it is a calming method that is used um and has been used. I was like, okay, it's real, so it's not a joke or anything like that, but um it did look far different, at least for me. Far different than what we initially had seen, number one. And then number two, the biggest piece of it, like um Supervisor Bamford said. I mean, I I clearly, I went back to the meeting. I mean, we have done a lot of work, you know, on our own and collectively with all of this. Went back to the meeting and I remember when she said, we need to make sure the co- you know, the committee, I mean. Yeah, the community was aware of it. And so, as we have said, apologize, we dropped that ball. But now that we're, you know, we're here, it again, loud and clear from everybody with the exception of one. Um so we do need, I do think we still need to do that traffic study, I do think, and I love an independent. You know, an unrelated third party to do it for us so that we can um kinda. Maybe bubble up something new or really put to bed the stuff that we know we can't do. And, you know, and clearly say, we can't do stop signs and here's why. I mean, details around it. And and then kinda go from there because at the end of the day, it is still an issue and hopefully the tickets work.
And we will share that new report and we will invite you to a meeting where there will be a good discussion. About anything that we're gonna do moving forward so that we can have your input.
And that's the the add-on I'm going to say is I'm going to challenge you to come out to more meetings and understand what we're doing or what's going on. Come on out. Right next month. Well, and and these happen twice a month, just for the board of supervisors, so come on out.
It's encouraging to me to watch government work at the local level and have it work, have it work for the people. And this is really, I mean, no matter what what end of the spectrum you're on. This is working, obviously, so.
Yeah, we have to.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
I do think sometimes people forget that we live here too, you know, and and this is our community and, you know, we love our community.
Our intentions are always good.
Always good. That is, that is definitely something that we all definitely agree on. Our intentions are good.
But we're also here to say, when we make some oversights, we're not too proud to turn turn it back.
Greg, not to put you on the spot, can you just give an um an outline of what the process will be then and what, you know, people can expect and when they can expect it?
Yeah, it's not necessarily the length of time to take the delineators down. Yeah, it's not necessarily the length of time to take the delineators down. That won't necessarily take long. But we do have to get on the schedule for guide mark. Um, so we can get on their schedule so they can grind off the road, the paint. So that's something that we're going to have to contact them and see what their earliest. No, it, no, no, it'll just, we're gonna grind that off.
Now, don't complain when they're not gone tomorrow.
All right, give us a minute.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Last and certainly not least, our item number sixteen. Any new business, anything from our committees?
Our public safety committee meeting did not happen in April. It's in May. Um, so that didn't happen. And then, uh, the rec center, um, our biggest thing was viewing and, and appreciating the new gym floor. So it looks amazing over there. Um, the week before, that weekend before, there was a craft fair over there and they had thought that the gym floor was going to be done. It didn't finish in time and the staff over there was amazing, just pulling it together to put the crafters into different nooks and crannies and it, it really was a nice craft fair.
Great. Uh, planning commission, we did not have a meeting. Uh, shade tree, we obviously had, um, the Arbor Day tree giveaway.
Parks Board, we talked about the potential renovation of the, uh, Wendell Stray Farmhouse and potential nonprofits to partner with for a capital campaign. So that was discussed. I also shared the, uh, historical society had provided us with a history of uh, that, like, the ownership of that parcel uh, over the years. So I shared that with the, the Parks Board as well. And then we were talking about the, um, which segues into Sewer Authority. Uh, we talked about the ribbon cutting that's coming up because we put the restroom in Rose Twink Park and we're about to open that. Uh, very exciting. Uh, that, I don't have a definitive date. They, um, they're having, uh, an issue getting the electric scheduled, uh, to be turned on. So, um, right now, you know, like tentatively by the tenth of May, you know. But, um, but we, we can't, we can't verify that yet. So, uh, we'll, we will be announcing um, when they're going to be doing that ribbon cutting. And we'd like to, we'd like to have as, as many of the like baseball and softball people come out to support that as, uh, as we can. So, uh, an announcement will be forthcoming and, and this segues into Sewer Authority. Because what they really want to do is help get people to follow their socials. Um, so anybody who's paying attention to this meeting at home or here, please follow Montgomery Township Municipal Sewer Authority, MTMSA on Facebook, on Instagram. Um, and let's help build their following so you can stay abreast of updates. Um, I will say that one quick thing, we did tour, uh, the Sewer Authority went on a tour, the Forest Park Water Treatment Plan, plant, and it is just an amazing facility. And we are very, uh, blessed to have such wonderful facilities that are so self-sufficient. I was amazed. If you ever get a chance to tour that water treatment plant, do it.
I agree. I did it last year. It's amazing. Our environmental advisory committee, April is like our big month of the year because it's Earth Day. Um, we, on our actual Earth Day, April twenty-second, we had a free screening at the Water Tower Theater of the regenerative farming and gardening, uh, movie called Kiss the Ground. And it was followed by short discussion. It was attended by a lot of, um, a handful of residents. And I think not only that, but increased awareness of some of the things that we can do and, um, made them aware the, the things that, that they can do in their own yards as well as when they, how they shop and so forth. As how, as well as how they can get involved with our, our community in Parks Department, et cetera. Um, and then we also had our electronics recycling event. We recycled about twenty-five and a half thousand pounds of, of recyclables, electronic recyclables in one, um, morning. And that, it was a huge increase from the previous year, which was just over sixteen thousand. So there are a lot of people that have big electronics that need to be, uh, replaced because I think there is a planned obsolescence right now with electronics. They really just don't last like they used to. Grandma's refrigerator worked for fifty years. Ours worked for four. So, uh, and they don't take refrigerators. I should mention that first of all, but, um, but that's the kind of thing that we just, things don't last as they used to. Um, but we do have a save the date for next year, which will be April eighteenth, twenty twenty-six. Um, they'll be doing the same thing with E-Force. They're a great partner in that. And then for our business development partnership, um, we, two things, we just are putting together and finally have finalized the contents for a welcome basket, um, which I think is in a bag actually, for each new business that comes to the township. And that includes a community guide that has a really comprehensive, uh, contact list of every person that they might need to call for any reason within the, um, township. And, um, in addition, we're going to have a networking event for Montgomery Township businesses, old and new, um, at Mark's Jewelers on September twenty-fourth from five thirty to six thirty. Um, and that will be another way for our community, uh, businesses to kind of work together and, um, um, make things happen for that. And now Carolyn and I tomorrow morning are meeting with the new general manager and leasing manager at the Montgomery Mall. So that is another big, big opportunity for us to, uh, listen and learn. So that's all for me.
And then my seniors, we had our, um, meeting. We actually spent a lot of time talking about the wall that heals and just them volunteering. Um, but right behind it was one of our, um, free seminars that go on. Um, it was, and don't hold me to the title, but it was basically, so your kids don't want your stuff. And, um, probably one of our biggest turnouts, I think there were over fifty people.
People are talking about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so it was, yeah, it was a hot, it was a hot topic. Um, and then we also just started talking about what our, um, seminars will look like for next year because we have everything filled up for this year. What was it? Okay. Anyone else? All right, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. Any public comment? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.